And don't worry.
Right.
Now again, that's fine, alright? My father's meeting the order, first order of business and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, in the business of political and electoral.
Hey, um. Mr. Roper called, he is unfortunately tied up, um, and won't be able to be here tonight. Um, we have, uh, Michelle on. On, she's sick, but just is called in, so we hear, and we have Amanda on, um, line as well. So, um, so the first, uh, thing we need to do is, um, approval of the regular set or motion to approve the regular session minutes from October the twentieth.
We'll move.
We can't.
Why?
Because I wasn't here and I.
No, but.
So we'll move back to the next one, so, alright. Uh, public comment period, uh, Franklin County Sheriff not here, Brookside, uh, Michelle, if you wanna pipe in, if not, we'll move on.
Sure. Yeah, no, um, just one thing, is Chief there? Or police there? No, okay, uh, Luke, did you receive the event application from Rachel Dobney for the Bobcat Run at chance?
Um, Worthington Fire has already approved it, Ions already approved it, um, if Steve is not back tomorrow, uh, Lieutenant Comical will approve it, so.
Okay. Yeah, she apologized for not doing that sooner, I guess she sent an email with it some time ago and didn't realize she was supposed to do that, so. If there's anything, um, we should be good for Saturday then?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And you didn't have anything, so.
No, I asked, uh, Strowser to make sure the streets cleaned up and have all the equipment out of the way. They don't plan on working Saturday, so.
Lieutenant Comical, I thought, Michelle, we're, uh, he's gonna try to make sure we have at least two cruisers over there, one to lead and one to follow, so.
Okay, thank you, again apologies for the short notice. That's the only update I've got.
Hey, Worthington Hills. Um, there will be a movie night on, um, Friday evening, uh, it's been pushed out there, so it'll be on school property, be cold, um, but it's something that they're trying to resurrect. Um, so other than that, uh, we have not been in touch with Strowser about the road project, but we can talk about that under road, so.
And, uh, at Conrevella.
Um, got an email from the HOA about the ballers.
Well, it's about, it's about the road being shown on all the road maps.
Yes.
As being a throughway.
And they want us to.
Contact the app company.
Contact the app companies, and I thought that we had actually done that, I know, I know originally the property owner came in to talk to them about connectivity and all that, that it got to, to that topic, so. I think when Chief Sussroth was back, I just wanna resurrect what we did, I thought we had talked to a couple of the app companies about them showing that as an open connection. Um, but obviously there's more than two out there, so I'm not sure. Uh, I think Charlie would even involved in that conversation, so. I'll just tell them that we're looking, unless you wanna.
I'll respond to that.
Okay, just.
I'm gonna let them know that it's, uh, we're looking at what can be done.
Okay.
That's it, quite honestly, I don't know. I don't know how many, I mean, there's three major map apps that I'm aware, but I'm sure there are a lot of them out there.
Uh, Mike Fong will talk to somebody up there, or Google Maps, I went there and reported it on the Google app, that it's not a cut through, that it's closed. Uh, I've done it on Waze as well, reporting it, that it's not a through street.
Do you, do you have to, uh, notify Apple Maps?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure how to do that, but I'll look into it.
How you doing?
Good, anything else?
No.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, bump down to, uh, bro, since we have guest speakers, I'm gonna bump down to, uh, the guest speakers, um, Dave and Nathan.
Good evening, I'm Dave Ruder, Frank in Stormwater, third annual chance to get in front of you, talk about stormwater, the stormwater permit, uh, we are finishing up a five-year permit term, I'm the last stormwater permit, we'll have a new one, it's supposed to come out soon, I haven't heard anything from them, um, it is supposed to be out in March, so we'll have a new five-year permit term, I don't expect any big changes, especially on your end, that, uh, you know, we'll be looking through the townships to really do, uh, the outreach is always important, of course, uh, that's what we really, uh, look for, you guys taking over, having some ownership in that, that's why we do things like the Stormwater Awareness Week, which now is a statewide, uh, resolution they passed this year, so the entire state is recognizing the first week of October is, uh, Ohio Stormwater Week, uh, so take advantage of that when that comes back around. I think the one change we'll probably see in the permit is salt outreach, uh, we currently have some outreach materials for that, we'll probably be pushing that out, but property use of salts has been something EPA has really been kind of focused on, uh, so I think we'll see some of that outreach come down in the next permit language. Otherwise, that's about it for me, do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, but it does bring up a question, how is our EPA current?
It's closed down.
Closed down, okay.
You have to, Dave then?
Oh, so could he be made through our office supervisor for the health department, just kinda here to remind you all that, you know, we, we do have a very active operation maintenance program here in Franklin County, I believe there's a little more than, than fifty, uh, what we call aeration treatment units or aerators that discharge to waters of the states, um, as, as Dave was talking about the, the stormwater and the, and the permit there, with Ohio and EPA, and every year we do report to them the number of what they call listed discharges and their, their dispositions, um, the, the ones that go to what they call the MS four, they go to a creek or waterway, you know, we still, if, if we have listed discharges, we still, um, would debate those, but we report to the EPA as far as the number of, of ones that go to the MS fours and, and just kinda try to keep on top of things with that, just continue to, you know, tell people if, if something seems amiss, to give us a shout, we'd be more than happy to, to come out and take a look. I have not heard anything subsequent to, the last time I was here as far as that subdivision, which I, I think is, is good, they, they ironed out the, the.
Their probably concerns.
I wasn't gonna say problem, I said concern. And which is a good thing, and, and, you know, and, yeah, it's, 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 it's good to see, so I guess with that, do you all have any questions for me?
That was my question.
Alright, yeah, I, I've heard nothing.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Absolutely, love it, see you all, yeah.
Good, see you, I appreciate you dying.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good night, be careful out there.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, um. Do you have anything, uh, anybody public wants to speak from a public standpoint? Well, that.
Happy to be.
You wanna?
Uh, Kevin Davis, just live at thirteen seventy-eight Oakbourne Drive, um, I know we've talked about thirteen sixty-six Oakbourne Drive, um, we now have a three-month-old daughter, and as we continue, we spent five hundred bucks to try to clear out the backyard, um, I've also spent our own professional time to clear it out, and as we mow the yard, every year we see snakes coming from that backyard into ours, um, we see mice, just wanna raise that to level of concern, um, to this group here, um, we're willing and able to do the community commitment to help clean it up, uh, was just looking to kind of raise that to a, a higher level, um, again, for the concern of our, our three-month-old daughter, um, I know the family's been there for a while, uh, we've been there since June of twenty twenty-one, um, but just want to, the, I know we've kind of condemned the property or gone through those motions, um, just would like to, to talk about that further than possible.
Okay, um, actually, we'll address thirteen sixty-six and his zoning, so.
Sorry.
No, you're great, no, you're totally good.
Just stick around.
Yep.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, not true.
Alright, zoning.
Okay, thirteen sixty-six, okay. Oakbourne Drive, um, uh, today I dropped off a warning that, uh, I would be on the property on Thursday at nine AM with, uh, Columbus Tree Services to get the estimate to remove the five dead trees, well, four dead trees and a tree that's about ready to fall into the road, and, uh, the, the cleanup is going slowly, it's, she's been steady cleaning back area, uh, the front area she's kind of maintained, but, uh, there's still no communication, and she, the last email I sent and the last voicemail I left, which has been probably a month ago now, and no answers, so I'm moving forward with, uh, removing the trees.
So I, I know we've talked about this several times, that we've done, we've done all of the administrative portion of notifying her, giving her options.
Yes, and the, the, the certified letter was returned uh, un-received.
Okay.
I have that, it's all in file, um. It was like saying communications and this pretty much cut off, so.
It has been declared a nuisance property.
And that was.
It was.
Yeah, and.
I get, I just got in.
Rick and I just had a conversation today about in the event that she is ultimately cited in the court over this, which appears to be the direction it could be heading here, if she doesn't respond to us, the steps that need to be taken, it's a, a new venture for Rick, um, but we're probably, um, we're headed to court, I believe, on this property, I just don't think they're capable of maintaining what they have, you know. It's unfortunate, there, there are two elderly ladies, I don't know, they appear to be two elderly ladies anyway.
One's a daughter and one's a mom.
And there's a third, third, the second daughter's.
Yes, yeah, she told me, the last communication I had with her was, like I say, it's been about months, she said the, her sister was supposed to be coming to.
They were out there a few Fridays ago, and again, I, I'm not the type of person that wants to come in here and talk about this stuff, we tried to help, it's now.
Well, I, listen, I, I've had residents, neighbors who have said, hey, can we help out? And, and that's all good, appreciate the, the good intentions of that, but that's not their property, you know, it's the property of the property owner, they have to come up with a plan to continue to maintain it, otherwise this is really our only option. Those trees have to be taken care of because we're not gonna get volunteers come in there and cut trees, we need a, a tree company that's bonded and insured to take those trees down and remove them off-site, and so that has to be, I think that has to be our primary concern right now, to take care of that issue. And then we have to come up with a strategy that is more long-term as far as the maintenance of that property, and it, unfortunately, our only avenue is to, is to put liens on, on properties as far as paying back, because we can't do it, how to continue to do it out of the goodness of our heart or anybody else's heart, because it just, it's not sustainable, um, and I don't suspect that they're anytime soon gonna put a for sale sign up in their front yard, so. I think once the trees get done, I think the next step is, is that, and I will contact Judgment Go tomorrow and see what that program offers up as far as community cleanup crews, but that, again, we have to look long-term, and if the only option is to put a lien on their property and, and have them pay it, we're gonna have to do it, otherwise we're gonna find ourselves in court, which I agree with you, Chief, that's where we're headed, and just, and then let, and let the judge decide.
Hey, and Rick, I just showed Chet that postcard that we got, that I just got, and he took a picture, that's what he's referring to, so let Chet call and then.
You and I will work on that together. But let's get, let's get the tree company, get, get their work done.
This is, to your point though, this has been a issue for at least five years. Um, and, and I, as, as many times as you talk to them about this, they, they give you the story about her dad creating that garden and how important it is, but they, they just completely fail to maintain it, and it is, anytime it comes into any semblance of order, and I don't know that it's ever really got to that point, it overgrows immediately.
Yeah, and they're great people, and that's why I don't wanna be a whistleblower, you know, the person.
Well, you gotta look next door, and certainly if I had a three-month-old child and I had snakes in my yard, if I didn't have a three-month-old child and I had snakes in my yard, that'd be an issue for me, okay, so. I don't like snakes.
That's scary.
Well, let's move forward on it.
Yep.
Where we going? Uh, the property at Riverside fifty-six twenty-two, the, the, had a thought of its property, I reached out again with a text message to Andrew, asking if there's any further progress on getting a gate, I do frequently go to the property, I have not seen any signs of illegal dumping, uh, was just out there today. The property looks pretty good.
Everything is cleaned off the property.
Yes, well, there's, there's a container box, there's a, there's the, the van out there.
Yeah.
Uh, this is, I, I don't know if, if this is something that's gonna have to, I, I think what I'm gonna do is, my best bet is talking to Neil Mathias, he did call in September, and he's trying to get Andrew to move in the direction of either developing it or selling it, so he was asking about zoning, he said he had looked at the courtyards in Revella and was comparing, and I, I explained to him that basically, very township, if he wanted to put a nursing home on it, I told him he could, you know, get a PUD and change his own on it, but anyways, that's where, that's where it was left last month.
Okay.
Or September, so, so I.
What are our options for getting the, the van and the, the box, storage box, don't really know.
It's have to go into environmental.
Well, again, I think we're in a position there, you know, that whole situation is being driven by.
I understand.
A, a domestic matter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think our, if he continues to fail to be responsive, I think our next option there as well is gonna have to be a citation and let the courts intervene, and, you know, judge can order both of those to be towed off of that property, um.
But I think right now the judge is hoping of anything being done or removed from the property.
Well, I, I think that's a, that's a.
None of the domestic.
Domestic relations.
Domestic side, yeah.
Environmental judge will not take into consideration the domestic parts and bring them within compliance, so I, um, I know that, uh, last time I looked up there, they had taken care of some of the openings that were, uh, tied into the, that creek.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I still think that there, there needs to be, uh, there needs to be a resolution with Andrew on what he's gonna do, we, we can't force him to put a gate up, I mean, it's private property, there's nothing in our zoning code that says he is required to have a gate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a gate there, I, I don't know that it works, I mean, it's like a mechanic or electrical gate, isn't it, I?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was something, but one of their rocks poured down the other.
Yeah, poured down part of the wall, like hauling in equipment there.
Look, you, you left a voicemail with Andrew, right?
Yeah, well, I sent him a text message.
Okay.
I've left a voicemail, sitting there again, that's the back of this.
Let me, let me try to. Let me see if I can't get ahold of him, if not, then I'll talk, call Neil and say, hey.
Yeah, Neil's, Neil's always been.
Right.
He contacts and then he'll get back with.
I understand.
But I, it's not Neil's responsibility, that that's been my.
We have a lot of factors going on here.
In, direct, indirect communication.
Right, okay. Let me, let me, we can try and, and I will.
Uh, then two, two other things here that I've got is Henderson Haven, um, since Friday, I've been, they're reaching out on, uh, they have a project manager with Landmark Survey Group that's requesting information on, uh, zoning setbacks, as well as Eva Reynolds today, with Chet reached out.
She found it.
She found it in the PUD.
Well, she found, she said she found it in the, in the document that was produced by AMS Consultants.
Mm-hmm.
Which may have been an attachment to the PUD, I don't know.
Yeah, because they were reaching out and asking about setbacks.
What setbacks are they looking for?
Well, they were, the, uh, Jody Ives Wallace is with the Landmark Survey Group.
Yeah.
I guess they're doing the construction, they're doing the vertical.
Yeah.
So she was inquiring about, uh, speeds for permits, and, and that's what, I did refer her, I told her, I said, you need to go to the PUD, all that information is in it, you, you need to submit that PUD with every permit.
Yeah.
And that has your setbacks and everything, because it is a PUD, it will not coincide with the standard township setbacks.
Right.
So hopefully.
Does she have some of the PUD drawings and everything, because it should, all should be on there?
Well, like I say, today I sent emails to Jody Ives Wallace and Eva Reynolds this, this afternoon, I sent them both the same email stating that all that information is, was in the PUD.
The, the other thing that we have to be careful is not to get, I mean, they're obviously being, um, contracted by, you know, the owners.
Oh, please.
Yeah, so my, my thing would be like, they, they should have that information, I just, I don't wanna be running operations for, yeah.
Well, Eva is the new Annie Richardson, who took over as, um.
What?
Don't afford that.
Okay.
All right, that's, I think she's new in this and she's trying to familiarize herself with it, and I'm not sure if she understands a PUD.
Okay.
So, I, I just sent her the message.
Yeah.
And I think as far as Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
I think you're right, that's what I don't think she's understanding, she's not connecting what the PUD.
PUD is, right.
So she took over, Eva Reynolds took over for Annie.
Is Annie?
And it was.
Is Annie on to another project or is she?
She got, got hired away by New Albany Group, she was that good, okay, so she went with the millionaires instead, so. Um, so now we have someone just coming in, and I think that's where she's missing it.
And if we need to, if we need to set up a, kind of walk her through that, if we can do that.
That was in my email to her, that, you know, if, if she needs some assistance in catching up and getting.
Okay.
Up to speed, that, you know, I gave her my cell phone number, told her to call anytime, and, uh, so hopefully that's moving forward, they, they, they're moving pretty good down there, they're getting the storm drains put in now, and that's, they should be getting the road here in the next couple of months, and probably, yes, like I say, it looks like they're ready to start submitting
Okay.
Vertical permits, uh, the cottages today just approved the first permit for cottages, those for the pump house, so they're moving.
Okay.
They're moving forward.
Well, we got a house, we got a.
Yeah, we have structure.
Yeah, we have a structure, okay.
We're gonna have vertical movement here.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Okay, uh, road department.
Uh, project updates, I'm hoping to have more on the road improvements project, uh, we were expecting a letter from Shelley this afternoon with our options to, uh, kind of repair the edge of that, the road, uh. It sounded like they were gonna present us with a two-foot mill and fill, and a four-foot mill and fill option, um. I don't really know what else was gonna be on there with that.
Right.
Well, Jesse kind of explained, uh, we just needed to choose which one we would prefer to go with.
I mean, I, I would say the two-foot would be fine, wouldn't it?
I think the two-foot would be good for this, it's a temporary fix.
Yeah.
Uh, it'll be get done a lot faster.
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just to get us to spring.
We're just going in that gap, and, I mean, there's gonna be some areas that are a little steeper than, than others, but.
Yeah, okay.
I think for the.
Yeah, I would just say, not to give, it gets to spring and then we'll be in good shape.
Yeah.
We just, as I told Chief today, we just need four things, we need to tell them what they're going to do, two-foot is fine, when they're going to do it, and the fact that we're not paying for it, that's on them.
Yeah.
And it's not on the county engineer, and it's not on the grant, and that they're gonna be here in the spring, early spring, like April fifteenth, May fifteenth, right there. So, we get it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, mid spring.
And then, are we, um, how are we communicating with the residents, turn lighting them?
I will simply have been out, I was kinda waiting on Monday to see where they were at with everything.
We had our logistics killed.
So, yeah, so we knew that we were sending out, um. I will get that out as soon as I hear.
Okay.
I did provide them with a punch list of, of items, there's a few areas on the, the new gutters that's cracked near catch basins that tell me to cut out, replace those sections, um.
And you got, um, on another part, did you get, um, you met with, uh, Jason Jarvis and, and, uh, at the end of Mark Haven?
I did.
Okay, you get that all figured out?
We, uh, we raised, we dug back and leveled out his, uh, his downspouts, and then he had the driveway, he wasn't, he didn't want it tore out.
Yeah.
And I don't think they planned on tearing it out.
Okay.
They did all that herb work by hand right there and saved.
Yeah.
His, uh. Yeah. It is a paper.
Yeah.
Uh, safe for us, the school project that's moving along, uh, most of the storm sewer work, uh, is near completion, they had to, uh, move some catch basin structures, um, to align with the new sidewalk, they're expecting the sidewalk crew to be in later this week to start, uh, the base and, um, foreman sidewalks, I did express to them that they do need to pass out a lighter in advance of blocking any driveway down there, um. I was talking to Sean Armstrong down there today, and he said he hasn't had any problems with anybody down there, but he's been good so far, um, but, yeah, it's moving along. Uh, gutter installation here, township's been completed, did you have anything to add on that, John?
On the gutters here?
Yeah, I wasn't here while they were doing it.
Now, they, they got them up, Rick and I were taking a look though, at some point, the gutters went up and we have just a little bit of aluminum that covers the bottom of our fascia board, but the top of the fascia from the roof down is exposed, um. I could see in the next two to three years where we may have some fascia board issues that we're gonna have to deal with, so. I, I, I wish I had seen that before they actually put the gutters up, uh, but just put that on the radar.
Is that the light we were talking? Yeah, I was gonna get up there and look if that was just, wasn't painted prior, or if it was exposed and.
It, it's just.
It was.
But it's all flaking away, some raw wood behind it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so at some point, probably gonna have to address that, but the gutter, now they went up, these guys did a very nice, um, all-new tubing down, out, so it's, it's, I mean, we should have no problem moving the water off these roofs now.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have, thank you.
I don't see anything under fire or any bad.
No report under fire or any mess.
Hey, I'm sorry, before we jump from road, one quick question, do we, um, have any new information on when we'll get the results from the, um, traffic engineer?
John had called Michelle, uh, last week asking for speeds, uh, the county responded that they won't have any speed measurements for him until the sidewalks are all in, and we are still waiting on, for the speed trailer, but we don't have any speeds for him.
Okay.
I've called in, I just, I have to hook him in.
Oh, yeah.
Last week, like, I have to get it scheduled to install it.
Okay, but we have, he, he has asked for speed, we simply don't have them at this point, Michelle.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Um. Police. Um.
Uh, flock cameras.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, I just know Chief Sussroth has a meeting scheduled with the flock folks uh, Wednesday morning, so hopefully Thursday he'll have additional information.
Can he, can, um, can you, can he get some more information on just the, you know, the mobile flock?
Mm-hmm.
And like what that looks like, how they better, how do you put them up, all that other stuff? I'll, I'll save them a thousand questions when we do that.
We wanna do that after the eight o'clock on Thursday.
Yeah, we can, I, I think that'd be all right.
We have a special work meeting at nine.
Do whatever you guys want, by gosh, we're.
Oh, wait, me.
Wait a minute.
Let me just check my calendar before I go and. Oh, wait, let me, let me just check my calendar before I go and, um. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Yep, we'll get it set up and posted, I'll look well, and say we.
Um, and I'm assuming we're gonna hold on the other two replacement of Cruiser M D Ts and the transition of Horizon and T-Mobile?
Uh, we already made the transition to T-Mobile.
Yeah.
Um, and we had seventeen iPhones that uh we had purchased when we were with uh Verizon, thank you, um, we have sent those out to Connect Solutions Group to get an appraisal on those, we're looking to probably sell them off for about fifteen hundred dollars.
What version are they?
They are thirteens, I think.
Um, we just went through this in my office, is there any reason why we wouldn't just keep them, they're paid off and just transfer them over to T-Mobile and and, I mean.
Cause T-Mobile gave us seventeens for free.
Yeah, but you pay for them.
No. These are all free, the government, it's a government.
Oh, it's a government program?
Yeah, it's not the one they, you know.
All right. Never mind, never mind.
Yeah, the the phones themselves are free, um. I think, and we had given you all those numbers a couple of meetings ago, but we're we're saving about uh, I think fifteen dollars a month per phone.
Oh, okay.
So anyway, and then the uh replacement of the M Cruiser M D Bs, um. That was just to put this on your radar, that will happen in January, so we'll probably have to approve the funds for that purchase in in December sometime, so Chief and I will have a conversation about getting that on agenda for the the meeting in December. Those are all due to be replaced by uh January.
Yeah. Uh, anything else under police?
Nope.
All right, you're up.
Um, we completed our A I training, um. Everybody that attended it found it to be useful and helpful, um. You did a lot of things with that, I I think one of the important modules that we had was really talking about the the ethics of using A I properly, uh as opposed to having it do your work, using it to maybe as a resource or enhancing what you've already created, but uh the overall training I thought was excellent, we will be receiving our certificates, which we will submit to the state along with our payment, once they manage, once they process our certificates, then we'll be reimbursed our cost at a training. Um, sexual harassment training is scheduled for eleven six at eight A M. That'll be Thursday, and that's mandatory training uh required by O Tarma. Uh, new business Christmas party is scheduled for the ninth at noon. Um, we have ten nominations for employee of the year. Go through those and then send out a secret ballot that everybody gets to vote on. The troops get to vote, the board's not voting on this, and then finally we looked at the copier, replacing the copier and building one, we're leasing building two and three right now, those leases are one year into the lease. Twenty-six will be two years into that lease, the other copier will be three years into a four-year lease. We own this copier, this copier has been here since
One seventy.
Twenty seventeen, it is, uh two nights ago, we had to call a priest and give it its last rites, it was really not going well at all. Um, but we're looking probably in twenty-six to replace that copier with a lease as opposed to buying it out, right?
Yeah.
So just put that on the board's agenda or radar. That's all we have. And when we get to healthcare, do you wanna go to fiscal person?
Yeah, I wanna um go to fis- uh Michelle, anything under fiscal?
Um, just two things, a quick update on the audit that they requested yet another extension. Um, there's just one item that they're looking for feedback, nothing they need from us, um, you know, no issues, um. Uh, just waiting for Opers to respond on something, so that's extended through the end of November now. Um, and then other than that, requesting motion for payroll, approval of payroll and disbursements.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Vote, yes, um, hey, Michelle, um, did you have a chance to talk to Amanda and Becky about that tax thing that you and I chatted about?
Yeah, I am, and actually I've got it put together, I just haven't uh had a chance to write some words around it, if that's something that you want to put in the newsletter, but I will share that with you.
Yeah, we got, when's the next slide?
Wow, it'll be beginning of the next.
Okay.
I'm sorry, like, that broke up.
It'll be at the uh end of the first week of January, so.
Um, yeah, I think so, because um I I think everybody's getting their you know, their mortgage and and it's just raised, so I don't, I I think it's like sort of a standalone kind of, hey.
Direct mailing.
I don't know if it's a direct mail.
Well, if you do direct mail, then they cost, and.
Yeah.
Problem is, if you don't, if you try to do an e-black, if you try to do something on a website, we have a number of residents that have called in. Simply don't have access to the internet, right, um.
And we're just doing it, what Michelle and I talked about is just doing it on a, on a average five hundred and fifty thousand, you know.
We we pulled a a few different values just for comparisons, but I mean, again, you know, the standard guidance has been, and I think should continue to be to point folks to the auditor website where they can pull the information themselves, um, which we would continue, you know, include that link again as well, um, I I gotta, I mean, I understand that a friend of yours made that comment, I w- we did not have, I I've not heard those rumblings over here, not suggesting that they're not happening, but um yeah, you know, I I I'm not sure I see issue with just, as long as we have availability of the link on our on our website and waiting for the next newsletter, I don't know that it's urgent, cause if folks have an issue or a question, they'll call in, right?
I'm not saying it's urgent, it's just, you know, I think everybody's getting their, you know, um, I know I received mine and um, I just think it's probably a good idea to get it out and whatever, uh but I I'm open to, you know, suggestions. So if we wanna wait till the next newsletter, that's fine too, I don't know what you think.
They they, I don't wanna be, use some splashy document here to I don't, I don't wanna spend money to people, by the way, this is where your tax dollars are going. That's gonna come back, but I agree, we probably need to continually educate people that their tax bill is X and part of X is about ten to twelve different things. And the township is this, and the school district, this, and Adam H, and the zoo, and everybody else. I think conversation about property taxes is hot and heavy, it's ongoing. Till some solution comes around, which I don't see, even though, you know, Assembly thinks they've come up with the fantastic ideas, those are all kind of administrative, even the county auditor or something think it's a solution, so. I think education is important, I just don't wanna I don't wanna do it such a way that we have to spend a lot of money to do it.
Right.
Cause it doesn't, I think it defeats the purpose, but the, but I, I could.
I also feel like if we send it out, I'm sorry, John, I I feel like if we send it out on its own, it sounds like we're trying to call attention to something or, you know, oh, what what's coming next, I feel like it it's it's a little off cycle, given that we communicated a lot of this information when we did have the levy on the, on the ballot.
Well, I'm open to suggest, I mean, if we wanna wait till the next newsletter, that's fine, um, you know, but I was just, I I think there's enough out there, and a- and again, you know, I think people are seeing it, and we've just gotta at least edu- into Chad's point, re-educate people as to where you can find out where it's at, um, as it relates.
Yeah, I I don't disagree with any of that, again, we we have a segment of our community that is aging, aged, and their ability to understand the internet or follow that link, or to even comprehend what that tax bill says, cause when you get your statement, it's on there, your your complete breakdown.
Right.
Of your property taxes on your annual statement, but I don't know that everybody quite understands how to read that or and I just feel like we have an obligation to the older folks in the community, just to help them understand. Perry Township is not getting one hundred percent of your taxes.
Right.
You know, and to your point, Andy, um, the biggest piece of that pie is going to an entity that's gonna come back here right directly and ask for even more pie.
Right. Okay, um, hey, you have anything, oh, sorry, Michelle.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, whatever you decide to do is is certainly fine, we can do it either way, I just, um, I I you know, we can rehash what we've, what we've sent out before, or, you know, refresh, I should say, not rehash.
Okay, uh.
Anyway, sorry, Andy, go ahead.
Hey, speaking of rehashing or reusing, um, it's been a while since we've sent out one of our questionnaires to the to the residents, you know, just kind of, you know, um, I know we've broken it down into uh were you here when we did that, your survey, community survey?
The last one was in twenty-two, I think, so, yes, but it's been, it's been a while.
I think, can you resurface that and and can we look at that at the next board meeting?
Take a look at it.
Yeah, just take a look at it. Cool. All right, um.
I'm sorry, I got one thing, hey, Michelle?
Yeah.
On the on the audit, you said that the issue not for us, but Mr. O B R S.
Mm-hmm, they they're looking for a a clarification of a late fee that was paid.
Okay.
That we paid, that's all.
Good, understood now, okay, thank you.
Um, anything else before we move to healthcare, anybody in the audience, anything? If you wanna hang, if you. Yeah, absolutely. No, wait, you can come and go as you want in future, you know.
I appreciate you guys, Tom.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. Yeah. All right.
Shall we?
You guys are up.
I was just doing here.
You will. Yeah. Thanks, sir.
It's an honor, there you go.
He goes prepared.
I do, I tried to at least. Uh, good to see you all, appreciate you having having me out, um. We put together just a little analysis regarding uh health reimbursement arrangement options for this year and into the future. Um, so as of right now, your current maximum liability from a health reimbursement account arrangement perspective is in that first row, that two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars per year. Twenty twenty-four number.
Hey, I'm sorry, uh Luke, are you able to share the screen, the slide, or is this the?
Uh, it's the, so, no, I'm sorry.
Did uh? Can we, can we scan?
Is it the same, or is it the um, has anything changed from the version that was sent out last week?
Same, same one as it was sent last week, Michelle.
Okay, then I can pull that up, thanks.
Okay.
I'll hold off, Michelle, till you have that up.
Go ahead, I'll catch up with you.
Okay. So for the first row, current H R A liability maximum for the year based on your enrollments, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, last year it was three hundred and fifteen thousand. So we have a hundred percent distribution over there, but that's just, that's your liability. We can remove a hundred percent distribution there, that's your total liability for the year, if everybody exhausted the entire health reimbursement arrangement. Um, year to date of that two hundred and eighty-two thousand, you all have spent a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Uh, so that's fifty-seven percent of the total liability. Um. Employees enrolled and utilized twenty-two out of twenty-two this year compared to twenty-four last year. Uh, so that's an average reimbursement, uh, seven thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars per member year to date. Last year, the year finished with twelve thousand sixty-four ninety-six. Um, so that that two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar liability number, that is annual, that's an annual number up there at the top. The one fifty-nine is the year to date. Uh, and then you've got your wellness dollar liability there of sixty-one thousand dollars, and year to date forty-five thousand of it has been spent, so that's a seventy-four percent distribution rate.
So when you say year to date, is that through October?
Uh.
Or is that September?
As of October twenty twenty-five.
Okay, all right.
Yep, so through, through October. Sorry about that.
You're right.
Um, so what we did is on page two, we modeled.
Oh, you wanted to see Justin?
Fair enough.
Yeah.
We're real informative.
Okay. Um, so on page two, what we did is we modeled out some options. Um, you got your current strategy over on the left, um, where you've got that max liability. We've we've estimated that, you know, based on past and what what we'd expect going forward, seventy-five percent is pretty reasonable estimate of what we'd expect that utilization to be. Um, so we'd expect two hundred and eleven thousand dollars of expenses out of that H R A. Which is an average reimbursement of nine thousand six thirty per mem- per boy. So really, the only option that we could consider due to the the wellness, the this year, people were um doing wellness activities to accumulate dollars towards next year. So next year's wellness program is kind of, you know, already decided because of that, so to speak, so the option that is available for next year would be this adjusted front-end H R A. So as opposed to the six thousand seven fifty and the thirteen thousand five hundred max reimbursement. That maximum dollar amount that could be reimbursed would go down to four thousand nine ninety-five and nine thousand nine ninety, so that's fifty percent of the the total um H R A liability today. So fifty percent of the the total amount that the H R A uh liability plus all the current wellness dollars, because we can't change that for for twenty twenty-six. Um, so that would reduce your maximum liability if we went down that route to two hundred and nine thousand seven ninety. And if we stuck with that seventy-five percent utilization rate, you'd be looking at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand three forty-three. Which would result in fifty-four thousand five hundred thirteen dollars of annual savings to the township. So that would be putting, you know, some onus on employees regarding spend, however, it wouldn't be on the front end, it would be, you know, once they've exhausted the H R A dollars is when that would kick in. Um. So what we could look at in in future years, if we wanted to further that modify the H R A is the the options on the right, so whether it be a backend H R A where employees have to uh uh fulfill a certain amount of expenses before the H R A kicks in. Or whether it be, you know, reevaluating the wellness dollars, which I think is something we should do regardless and how those are accumulated, um, for, that would be for one-one of twenty-seven. Um, and it's something that we would want to decide here as we move into the new year. Uh.
Does that decision, looking at the year twenty twenty-seven, does that decision have to be made in January of twenty-six?
It doesn't necessarily have to be made in January, I mean, you need to make it within a a framework of time that would give employees enough time to you know, do the activities, so six months minimum, I'd say nine months would be ideal, so.
So the first quarter.
First Q one, yep, and then Q one puts you in a good position, as long as we make a decision on that front, that can go along kind of maybe even with the renewal process, uh knowing that it's a five-one renewal, we can kind of make those decisions in tandem. Um, and one of the things that we discussed is, you know, the the potential for asking for a short contract to get back on that one-one renewal date, I think that'll simplify a lot of things on the H R A front and uh bring a lot more clarity with how deductibles accumulate and things of that sort, so. Any questions on those options?
So just the, just, so I understand, so twenty twenty-six, we're we're.
You're locked from a current wellness dollar standpoint, that because people have been accumulating dollars, I think that might even be in in contracts.
Right.
Regarding the the wellness dollars, um, however, what's not that what is uh able to be modified is outside of the wellness dollars, how much of the H R A is reimbursable. I don't know, how much, how much. Go ahead, Michelle. Oh, that I don't know. I'm talking too loud?
You're good.
Well, I I did have a question, but you you must be reading my mind, that uh you, before I was ready to ask it. Well, I, I did have a question, but you, you must be reading my mind, that, uh, you, before I was ready to ask it. So, the, I understand that we can't, um, modify wellness dollars at this point. Are you saying though, that in terms of modifying to like a backend H R A, or adjusting. The amount of the, the, of the H R A that can be modified next year?
That, that's a good question. Let me take that back to my team, just to. And they told me that the backend H R A could not be modified, that like we could not modify to backend in this. Next year. But, um, the way I'm processing it, I feel like that should be something that's on the table unless it's specifically written in the contract. That those wellness dollars can be first dollar, you know, so I don't know, that's something I can dig into with the team.
You guys. Current copy of the, uh. F O P, uh.
You can send it, that'd be great.
I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
You want me to send it to you or to Michael?
Me, Michael and Steven, all three of us, we agree.
Yep, I'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Um. Any other thoughts on health reimbursement arrangements specifically before we transition into health savings accounts? And obviously, these are just options, we can go anywhere in between any of this. So these are just kind of initial thoughts and what we may recommend.
I mean, I will, but I'm sort of digesting this for the.
Yeah, understood, first time seeing it, and, and the only thing I'll add before we go on to is. That because of the richness of the benefit. Uh, and these are things, you know, like any, any change that we're gonna make is gonna feel big to employees. Um, yet, the dollars, the dollar amount that may be saved by the township may seem like fifty-four thousand dollars, I don't know if that screams. Big number compared to what you were expecting or not, but it's a trading of our employees paying or is the employer paying? Um, so I think that's the, the challenge with any change, when, when you've got as great of a benefit as you guys do today.
So, so what, if I hit all my wellness. Things, what, what, what's the reimbursement on that again?
Today, the way it works is, I believe it's seventy-five percent of the deductible is, so that current strategy.
Yeah.
That sixty-seven fifty and thirteen thousand, five hundred, that's your deductible of your plan.
Yeah.
So seventy-five percent of that is just provided to all employees automatically. The other twenty-five percent, I believe, is earned through the wellness dollars. And maybe sixty-six, thirty-three, it's either seventy-five, twenty-five, or sixty-six, thirty.
But if it's, if you complete all the wellness points. End of the year, your H R A can be fully funded.
Correct.
Can you do a dollar amount, like if you hit all of the thing, you just. You, you basically get a dollar amount, like, hey, you get a hundred bucks for meeting all these wellness, like a fixed dollar amount.
You could do that, I think, I, my understanding from talking to Michael and Steven, who dug into it more. And, and I can double check on this when we look at the contract, is that the wellness dollars and how it works today specifically may be in there. And because of that, you may be tied to that for the twenty twenty-six year.
Okay, right.
But that doesn't mean we can't reevaluate that totally for one-one twenty-seven and do something more simple like you're referencing.
And, and how far down the rabbit hole can you get with a wellness program? Meaning, like, I know the current one is like, hey, if you're a non-smoker, you get X amount of dollars, you got an annual physical, if you got a vision checkup, you get. And you go.
I think you guys are far down the rabbit hole with the current program.
In terms of something that's required?
Yeah, like, I, you guys, I believe, require a lot more than most wellness programs.
Wow, I thought, I was, I was wondering the opposite, the other, like, hey, if you don't, you know, if you're not. Treating certain things, you don't get, like, I mean, the whole, the whole part of a wellness program is to make sure.
Make sure you're well.
Yeah, and make sure you're well, or you're, you're proactively working on whatever you're doing, and I'm just wondering the other side of it.
Well, we see most, so this is, what most employers do with regards to wellness program is they, they. Instead of tying an H R A, uh, arrangement to it, they will provide premium decrements. So say, uh, like, for example, I'm going brave under, if I have a physical screening each year. And I get a biometric screening.
Yeah.
And I need three of five metrics. I think it's triglycerides, uh, glucose, um. Blood pressure, there's like two other ones too.
Yeah.
Five key indicators, if you need three or five, you pass and you get a lower premium rate.
Okay.
Per paycheck.
Right.
Um, if you don't pass, you have to do a reasonable alternative. Like, uh, I think ours, our program's called Naturally Slim or something, you go through a, uh, basically a class. Virtually. Then that gets you the ability to still get the discount by going through that process. That's the extent of most, that's like, that would be what I would consider. Far down the line of what most wellness programs are, and I. Uh, last time I looked at yours, I think there's a lot more on there that, uh, accumulated.
Right.
A lot of different things that we don't typically see.
Okay.
We allow our folks to accumulate more by meeting all these points. I mean, the, the opportunity to accumulate is there for our guys.
Mm-hmm.
And gaps, as opposed to, here's the max you can get, here's what you need to do to get them.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Gotta do this, but.
And most, most of your people accumulate almost all the wellness stuff.
Yeah, and they don't have to do a lot to accumulate them. I mean, it's not like I gotta go run. That's why, that's what I thought, because. Even taking a little lines that Andy was, I mean, it just didn't seem like. There's cri, there's set criteria for it, other than go get a physical.
It's voluntary, it's, it's, um. Uh, participation-based, not outcomes-based, so that, that is fair, like, yours today is participation-based.
Okay, that, I guess what I was looking at is.
Yours is more outcomes-based, which is what, and, and in that sense, we could definitely transition that.
It's result-based.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, it's like, you know, you're kind of proactive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright.
That's definitely on the table.
Okay.
Definitely on the table, and then that only thing, you have to be sure we, and like I said, this is how our wellness program internally is set up. So, we, you have, just have to provide a reasonable alternative.
If you don't meet that.
If you don't meet the metrics, and you don't have to get, you can't require that people get within the metrics. But you, uh, you can require that they can.
You give the original option or one alternative.
Yep.
So again, remind me, when would, if we were to change that?
Yep.
And whatever way we change it, when did we do it, the first quarter?
You'd change it in Q one.
Okay.
But, and people would do their activities in twenty twenty-six, that would be effective one-one twenty-seven.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yep. Because this year, people were doing activities and accumulating points.
So we're in the.
To be, yeah, to be active one-one twenty-six. Everybody did their activities last year to get their points for this year, so they've already got their dollars.
Nice.
Um, on page three, the other option to consider could be, uh. H S A dollars instead of H R A dollars. Um, now, these are, the, the big difference between H S A and H R A is H R A, you only pay out as an employer if employees use the dollars. H S A, you put them in the employee's account and they are now the employee's dollars. Uh, so, yeah, that is an option. However, I don't, I, yeah, from a financial perspective for the township, I'm not sure how advantageous that would be comparatively to where you're at now. Um. So, there's some options here, cover full H R A deductible, uh, cover fifty percent. Uh, or no employer contributions, uh, and just the employee can contribute up to a certain amount, so. Uh.
I mean, to be honest, where I'm at is, we need to change the H R A. I don't know how we need to change it, but I don't know, I want to, you know, an H S A, whether or not that's advantageous for us. I just, I think there are things that we can do with the H R A to modify it.
Think so too, that would be probably the direction I would get, I think.
And if we're gonna do it the first time, like the first year out, I think we take that one step.
Mm-hmm.
And as things go on, I think we take, we look at additional steps. But, I don't think you do a wholesale change of the H R A, but you do some kind of modification to it.
Yeah. Shift to an H S A would be a, that'd be a big, that would be a big shift and a big change, I mean, a P P O, that, that, that. The type of program you have today. But what it would take to go to an H S A eligible plan, meaning employees have to pay the first thirty-four hundred dollars of their expenses. If it's an embedded plan, so like, that'd be a big change from where they are now. I think that'd be probably too drastic of a shift. For me to conserve. So last but not least, on page four, additional recommendations, um. Uh, we talked about this a little bit already, that, and realigning from five-one twenty twenty-six to a one-one twenty twenty-seven renewal date. So what, we will ask that from Anthem in the renewal process. Um, that'll just simplify things from a medical point of standpoint, H R A setup, well, it'll just simplify a lot of things. I know we made that change specifically off-cycle, but not something we can't re, relook at. Uh. There's also, the other dynamic here is because your H R A liability is, 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 as large as it is. There could be an opportunity to just buy a richer plan. Like, right now, you are per, per, the underlying plan that you're purchasing is six thousand, seven fifty deductible, thirteen thousand, five hundred. There's a, there, it could be feasible that a better plan, meaning like it may be a five thousand dollar deductible. Or a forty-five hundred dollar, five, forty-five thousand, forty-five hundred dollar deductible plan. The premium savings may be greater than, like, that, or the premium, you might save more in premium than the H R A liability. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Because your H R liability, or H R A liability is so large today.
Right.
That makes sense, or should I say that differently? Right now, your premiums are, what'd you say, Michelle?
I was gonna say, so you're saying if we, we had a pre, a program with a higher premium. Then it would offset, therefore, the deductible would be lower? Is that what you're saying?
You may actually be in a situation where if we, like, let's say, just for round numbers purposes, I don't think, these are not exact numbers. Let's say you're currently paying five hundred thousand dollars for your plan today.
Mm-hmm.
Like, the online plan, you're paying five hundred thousand dollars in premium. If you were to, um, let's say, maybe. Do a four thousand dollar deductible plan instead, maybe that costs six hundred thousand dollars. And the D F C and H R A liability is greater than that hundred thousand dollar premium.
Gotcha.
So, that, I'm not, that, that, we won't know until we see numbers.
Right.
But, we, as we were looking at it and looking at how substantial H R A liability is. That could be something to consider and that we should model out. So, it'd just be a horse trading of dollars. Right now, you've got a, you've got fixed premium dollars, variable H R A dollars. It would be a larger portion of fixed premium dollars, or a smaller portion of variable H R A dollars. But that, you netted out, that it might be a net win for the township. So, we don't normally see that, but in your situation, that might be the case.
Cool.
Um, and then last but not least, we already hit on that, wellness program needs to be reevaluated for program goals in twenty twenty-six. Could evaluate eliminating or adjusting the program for twenty twenty-seven to not be H R A dollars. Right, so instead be premium incentive, like, per paycheck dollars, which is what we see most do. Um, and we can make that decision together in Q one, leading up to it. Um.
And we have a healthcare calendar. That we need to know, that we need to make distribution by X date, and then, I'm always wanting to.
Timeline, well, yeah.
You basically say, okay, what's the point, and then work backwards. That we need to have our ducks and rail understand, so we can make a decision to make it, because it always seems like things creep. Up on us, and then we're kind of in a, in a panic mode, or not, not panic mode, but we're, we're kind of pushing, pushing to make decisions. My, my question is, can you guys say, hey, you guys need to do X date? And then typically, we see four to six weeks of, you know, bantering back and forth, doing whatever in order to get to that date.
Yeah.
Can you guys do that?
Most definitely, and that's a very regular part of our process, and we're very timeline-based.
Right.
Unfortunately, with groups of your size, we, we don't get the renewal from the carrier until about sixty to seventy-five days out from the renewal.
Right.
And quoting carriers will not provide quotes unfortunately, until, it's a very strange.
Yeah.
Industry, in the sense that quoting carriers want to see your renewal in order to even provide a proposal.
Right.
So the market typically will not even provide a proposal, so what, so I say that because. We, we're very timeline-based and we'll, would, I think the team may already have a timeline, but we'll build one, working backwards from five-one. And even if we do everything as soon as we can do it.
Right.
You're still gonna feel that same way, and it's a function of when the carrier releases the renewal, unfortunately.
Well, and then the other thing is, can you guys find out if there's any negotiating, you know, kind of like what we dealt with, with, you know, the Anthem? And, you know, that whole thing, are there any negotiations that you guys are gonna be aware of that's gonna affect that decision? That we can start talking about that? You know, because, because I think we all knew in the back of our mind, but we didn't want to risk it, that, hey, you know. This, it's prob, they're gonna probably negotiate, because I think we, we missed. I think we missed an opportunity, um, with the whole fear of O S U and. Anthem not coming to negotiation, so.
Yeah, but, and, there, there's no local disputes right now between any of the major carriers that, that we're aware of.
Okay.
Or maybe on some of the Medicare, Medicaid Advantage, or Medicare Advantage side of things. Uh, but not on the major carrier side, uh, commercial side, so we're always keeping an eye on that. That is really, last year was an anomaly in the sense that there was a lot of those disputes that happened, and I think it was a lot of contracts. Coming due, coming out of COVID.
Yeah.
In that inflationary time that it was, um, so there was. Hospital systems and insurance companies were just really, really far apart.
Yeah.
A lot of those contracts have now been resolved, and those are three-year deals.
Okay.
So, the, I think you'll see a little bit more peace here over the next couple of years, but that'll always be something we keep you all.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Justin, one, one quick question. We're talking about the primary insurance being five-one, but then H R A renewed January first, correct?
It does.
Yeah, so we need to keep in mind that decisions that are made relative to the H R A have to be made.
But I, I look at this thing as like, it's almost like tax, where, where the H R A is in the rear. You know, so the decision that we make in twenty, you know, the first quarter twenty twenty-six is gonna affect twenty twenty-seven.
With regards to the wellness dollars piece, that is true. With regards to the rest of the H R A.
Yeah.
That's not true.
That's not true. You, you could make a decision now to adjust the rest of the H R A.
Right.
To maybe, like, as an example, um. That adjusted front-end column on page two. Which would then put. So, roughly seventeen fifty on, on employees only, from a deductible standpoint, and only if they had large claims. Would they ever reach that seventeen fifty?
Right.
And whatever thirteen thousand, five hundred minus nine, nine thousand, nine ninety is three. Roughly three thousand, six hundred, something like that, on families.
Same way with the backend, whether it's front-end or backend, you got to do.
So what I need to double check on is whether you guys can make the decision on the backend. What, what we have noted here is that it cannot be done in twenty twenty-six due to current wellness program goals. And it's probably because the wellness program, H R A dollars are first dollar. Uh. So, you couldn't, you couldn't put them on the backend in twenty twenty-six, most likely, I'll, we'll look at the, we'll look at everything, but.
But we need to keep in mind that there is, there is room to move. In that adjusted front-end in twenty twenty-six, but we would have to make that decision.
The F U H O.
In, in December.
Correct. Correct, and this is an example, that does not mean we have to do it this way, it could be.
So, it could be modified to that.
More or less, you, you have free, the only, the, the piece that you don't have free reign on is the wellness dollars, the other piece, you do. So. This is.
Do an adjusted. You could do an adjusted front-end with. No wellness dollars?
Um, not, not in twenty twenty-six, because I believe the wellness dollars. Um, not, not in twenty twenty six, because I believe the wellness dollars is what is written into, and I'll, we'll double.
Sort of building it.
Yeah, but the rest of it, that's fully funded, you don't have to fully fund the rest of it, you can get rid of all of it completely if you wanted to, I would not recommend that, but. You've got flexibility there. The balance of cost savings and employee disruption, that's the. Benefits conundrum that it seems like every employer is faced with is how much. How much cost savings is possible and how does that compare to the employee disruption and is it worth that? It's a dollar amount worth of. So right here, we're looking at, is fifty four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars worth? The disruption, and I, I mean, I think we've talked about this and long term. You know, I think we need to stair step into something where employees have a little bit more illness in order to make the program sustainable. But any small change made is a huge percentage feel for the employee. Small percentage feel to the township comparatively, but every little bit counts too, so I see both sides of the left. Does this help or did I make you more confused than when you walked in?
No, I think it's beneficial, I think.
Okay.
Certainly gives. Gives options. And it certainly explains timelines. Way clearer than what I thought.
And we, we will build a timeline working backwards from five one. Chief makes a good point, we do need to look at and make H R A decisions, you know, sooner than that for twenty twenty six, so.
Yeah.
We'll get a drop dead date for that and include that on the.
Yeah.
That we follow up.
I'm more interested in like. When do we need to make a decision, I always, we always put something on a calendar and then we, uh, it's like, what, it's really.
We need to work backwards, we need to work backwards from when you need to make a decision, so we can have conversations before that.
Correct, and then when do you need a drop dead date for a decision? Because we, and the, you know, like, we're working towards a date, but then we always end up leading on top of that date, so.
Hundred percent, yeah, fair enough. True.
Oh, hundred percent true.
Hundred percent true. Yeah, and I mean, a function of that, like I said, is, is a function of just the insurance carrier timelines. Function of it is our communication too, I think, so we can, we can do a better job of that, make sure there's decision dates out there clear, so we can work backwards from.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you guys. You all have a good evening.
Me too.
Thank you.
Yep. Keep on for. Thank you, yep.
Um, anything else for the good of the cause? Um, hey, do we need a motion to, for, for me to sign the opioid thing, or do you just need a signature on it?
I believe that's already been approved well back in the past, yeah, so it's just, you're, you're. Cause you're the, um, the chairman of the board, just.
Okay.
Amanda, there's something to go to order, Amanda?
Yes.
Who are we appointing to the.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, Ron McClure of Jackson Township.
Yeah, this chairman, I moved to. Uh, what's, what's the resolution say? Hold on.
Yeah.
They pull up prairies.
But yeah, Ronald McClure.
It's, it is, yeah, it's in the, it's in the. It's in our box.
I'll open it up. Thank you.
Uh, re- resolution approving the nomination of Ronald McClure as the representative of Franklin County Townships on the Swaco Board of Trustees.
I saw him.
Second vote?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, anything else?
Hey, um, Andy, did you sign the letter to the employees about the healthcare?
No, we're doing it Thursday, cause Jim, um, all trustees are signing it, so we'll do it Thursday and send it out.
Oh, okay, all right.
Anything else?
I moved to adjourn, sure.
Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes.